I would like to call to order the November meeting of the Morrisville Planning and Zoning Board. You can join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the flag for which it stands, a nation under God and indivisible, with liberty.
Thank you. Any changes to the agenda?
No, Chairman, they're not.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Move to approve the minutes.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Has anyone looked over the minutes? I know there was a last-minute addition or change. Any questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion for that as well. Minutes?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries unanimously. So do we need to do, I guess we should do these, I mean, does that cover, will that cover both? Do we need to do these two separately because we do have the two different?
You said minutes, Paul, so I would say yes.
I mean, with no objection, I think we'll, yeah. We have no other presentations or comment or old business. Or do we have any public comment? Any public comment not to do with the items on the agenda?
Everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
My name is Caleb Arid. I'm the transportation planner, too, for the town. Tonight I'll be bringing to you a development agreement for the construction of Odyssey Lane. So a little bit of background. The town's transportation plan does envision a connection between Transair Drive to the north and McCrimmon Parkway to the south. That would follow, so that's actually shown here in the CTP, Comprehensive Transportation Plan. It is currently called Odyssey Lane and it, on the right here in the aerial, it currently stubs just north of the undeveloped property with the arrow shown here. So the CTP envisions that road to be completed through. A development petition was submitted for a little over 300 apartments along the Odyssey Lane corridor. That was that property that Arrow was pointing to before. And as a part of that, they are required to construct any CTP improvements that are on their property. And so that would be that Odyssey Lane extension. So they're required to do it through their property. That is actually highlighted here in red, the extension of the Odyssey Lane. But note that it doesn't go all the way to McCrimmon Parkway, right? They had, there's a little sliver of property that is between McCrimmon Parkway and their property. So that's kind of the scope of the extension here. But luckily, the adjacent development in question, that little sliver of property, is a development called Pathway Triangle. So they are required to do the work on their property. However, that segment was so short that they paid payment in lieu of the construction of that back in the summertime. That payment in lieu total is $323,747. They're also required to dedicate right-of-way for the construction of that. So as part of this development agreement, Leon Capital, the development team that's building the apartments, will construct the full length of Odyssey Lane through their neighbor's property, and the town would reimburse them for the funds that would be available. It's about 130-foot of Odyssey Lane that's off-site that we're talking about here as part of this agreement. And these maps here are just showing the extent of what that looks like on an aerial image, that 130-foot, and then what they showed on their, on the Pathway Triangle Development Plan. We had them show a schematic of what that looks like. So a lot of you may be familiar, there's a lot of development going on on McCrimmon Parkway. One of those projects is the Spark Development. All of these projects had to do transportation impact analyses, and the Spark Development, whose main driveway will be just across the road of McCrimmon Parkway from Odyssey Lane, connecting it, making a four-lane intersection. They were found to need a traffic signal there for a four-legged intersection. At the time, there was not a fourth leg of the intersection, so they were paying payment in lieu of that traffic signal at that intersection. That payment in lieu is of $393,297.70. So another part of, the second part of the scope of this development agreement is to, Leon Capital Group, as a part of their project, is to construct that stoplight there as well. And of course, be reimbursed upon completion and approval. Kind of what this is showing here is, we have the Spark Project to the south of McCrimmon. McCrimmon Parkway goes down, and then the apartment community, and of course, your And so to kind of sum it all up, our development applicant is Leon Capital Group, constructing the apartment project. And of course, they're going to be constructing Odyssey Lane through their property. And the scope of the agreement, of course, is the 130-foot of Odyssey Lane extension, as well as the installation of the stoplight at the intersection. So some things for you guys to consider tonight. Odyssey Lane is not required to be completed by the town at this time. However, it is a part of the CTP, so it's kind of on, if you could consider it on the list of things that the town does need to complete. And so this is a great opportunity to complete the extent of the road. And, you know, if it's not completed now, it still would be the town's responsibility to do it. And also, the stoplight, as I mentioned, the stoplight was recommended in several TIA's. That's going to help improve traffic flow through the intersection. There's going to be a lot of traffic there, and it's also going to improve safety through the intersection as well, allowing people to, I would say, more uniformly move through So just to summarize the agreement, if the town is to enter into this agreement, Leon Capital Group is agreeing to construct the remainder of Odyssey Lane, that is when the, within the town-owned right-of-way, that's actually the 130-foot section off their site. And they are also agreeing to construct the stoplight at the intersection of McCrimmon and Odyssey Lane, as required in multiple TIA's up to this project. And the town agrees to reimburse Leon Capital Group up to $323,747.93 from the previously collected payment in lieu of road construction by Pathway Triangle, and also to reimburse, to reimburse Leon Capital Group up to $393,287.70 from the previously collected payment in lieu from, for the stoplight by Spark at that intersection as well. No funds outside of those PILs that were paid will be, will be paid toward, as a part of this development agreement. It's just, the town staff recommends that the town execute this development agreement and recommends approval for the following reasons. Odyssey Lane is a planned road shown in the Comprehensive Transportation Plan and would be completed if this request is approved, and the Morrisville 2.0 development is constructed and permitted as planned. The town would form a public-private partnership with Leon Capital Group, managing the construction of the portion of Odyssey Lane, which is located in the town right-of-way. A stoplight at Odyssey Lane and McCrimmon has been determined to be necessary to mitigate future traffic congestion and improve safety at the intersection. Future construction costs of completing both road construction and stoplight installation are unknown, and they could increase with the passing of time. And then the completion of Odyssey Lane would improve street connectivity.
Thank you. So do we have any comments or questions? Tim?
Yeah, a couple of questions. Has the development application of the apartments been approved yet?
It has not been approved.
Okay, but it's in, it's been applied. The application has been submitted.
That's, that's correct. It's in review right now.
Is this a little bit of putting the cart before the horse? I mean, what happens if, you know, we don't approve, the town doesn't approve the development application? Does the roads, Odyssey Lane, still get built, or does the stoplights still get put in?
It would be that, that, that payment, so assuming that, you know, the, the development doesn't continue, right, the applicant does not pursue it anymore, that funds, those funds, the PIL would still be managed by the town. It would be the town's responsibility at that point, too.
Unless you find another developer that wants to develop?
Right, the property, and it's, you know, a reason.
I'd be going a little bit astray from the agenda, but for those apartments, do we know anything about them, like price points and sizes and things of that nature?
Not, but there is someone from the applicant team here, if you, if they are comfortable with, with.
Right now, it's Class A multifamily.
Thank you. Nothing further, thanks.
Okay.
Go up to that intersection picture.
Sure, sure.
Just looking at this picture, it looks like the Spark Road and the Odyssey Lane are not aligned. Now, that may be just a pictorial representation here.
That, that is, that is an error on the person making the map, so I apologize on that. It is a four-legged intersection. It comes together at that.
Yeah, we have seen these unaligned or misaligned intersection, one right down the road, right? So don't want to repeat of that.
That is, that is guilty, guilty as charged.
I suppose this will also have the turn lanes and, you know, all the other things that go along with it?
That's correct, yeah. So the, those TIA's that I mentioned, they kind of identify the appropriate stacking for those turn lanes, to make sure that everybody flows through appropriately and safely. And again, the, the, the stoplight itself is what helps to kind of, I'll say, manage the traffic flow at, at the capacity we're anticipating.
Okay. One final question.
Sure.
Are the stoplights on McCrimmon all coordinated or based upon the traffic patterns? Or, you know, it's like, they're not necessarily aligned or synchronized?
Yeah, that's a great question. So the Town of Cary manages the stoplights on the corridor. They are synchronized with Town Cary's traffic signalization, synchronization. The stoplight would go on that, that, their traffic signal plan. So it would be synchronized with the rest of lights on the corridor.
Okay, thanks.
Chris?
Well, it was on a list, so it makes sense to me to pull it forward at this time.
Yeah, my only comment, so I guess the agreement is basically, this is it. Like, if it goes over, it's on them. I mean, the agreement covers that, correct? You said there was no additional money. So regardless of whatever happens, you know, oil spikes and asphalt goes up, whatever, it's covered 100%.
Exactly. The, the, it is, the agreement is written to not exceed those amounts of money.
Gotcha. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion about it.
I make a motion to approve, well, right here. I make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-405-0 of the Morrisville Town Council authorizing a development agreement with Leon Capital for the construction of the portion of Odyssey Lane and installation of a stoplight at the future intersection of Odyssey Lane and McCrimmon Parkway.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
For your time.
And we can move on to the floodplain.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ben Mills. I'm the Stormwater Engineer Manager here from Morrisville. Came here to talk about the proposed, very minor edits to the floodplain management section out of the UDO. And I'll kind of give a background and purpose of why we manage the floodplain in Morrisville, the sections that may be affected. All right, so why do we even manage the floodplain in Morrisville? Well, here's your kind of the general reasons why communities do it. Most important one is to protect people and property, kind of identifying where your high-risk flood areas are, you know, benefits the community, just so they know if I'm going to buy a house, what kind of risks there are, if I want to live here, what kind of risks could be in this area. And that benefits, you know, businesses as well. To, part of the regulation, to ensure federal flood insurance and disaster assistance are available, we have to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. So during a huge hurricane or something like that, you may hear the governor declare, you know, emergency, state of emergency or something like that. And FEMA may have federal funds available to come help out the community. So if we don't participate in the National Flood Insurance Program, then those funds wouldn't be available to Morrisville. So we also regulate, you know, it saves tax dollars and reduce flood losses here in Morrisville, pretty much saying, hey, if you want to build in this area, you need to have these certain regulations, or your development needs to meet these certain regulations and specifications so it won't flood out every time a hurricane or a flood happens. I mentioned the National Flood Insurance Program. It was created back in 1968 by Congress, and the purpose was pretty much to protect lives and property from flooding. And another key thing is to reduce financial burden for the property owners. So kind of the main, well, this program is pretty much an agreement between FEMA and the participating community. So the partnership involves flood hazard maps, flood insurance and regulations. The flood hazard maps are created by FEMA and the state, and we recently actually, they came up with new maps here less than a year ago. So the town went ahead and adopted those back in July. And the other things, calls, the flood insurance is part of the program as well, so people in these flood hazard areas, the national program offers flood insurance people can buy to protect their assets. Here's pretty much everything, I don't know if you can see on the screen, of, you know, what it takes to participate in the program. Kind of the main things I talked about is, you need to have a flood damage prevention ordinance. We have one in here in Morrisville. You have to keep it up to date, is the main thing. You have to, the other main thing is you have to update, you know, flood maps, the new ones as they come out. So we already done that. At this stage, we're kind of updating our ordinance to match the state. The other main thing is we keep track of what, what kind of development's happening in the floodplain, and reviewing that as that comes in, to make sure it's meeting our regulations, and we're keeping track of that. For anyone who hasn't seen what these maps look like, this is what it looks like on the screen. The blue area is kind of the floodway. Pretty much no development can happen in there unless you have an engineer and study saying, hey, if I put a greenway here, it's not going to cause the flood, water elevations to rise and flood out my neighbors, or something like that. Where we adopted these back in July 2022, in the program, that was mandated, so we took The other thing that happened besides the flood maps being updated is the state model ordinance was updated as well back in 2022. So those changer, changes, like I said, were very minor, mostly just updates to definitions, legal language, additional sections to help clarify some specific regulations, ordinance. And you have to make sure our ordinance is at least same as the state model ordinance to participate in that. Expected sections are pretty much, it's just limited to sections 5.6, and that's titled Floodplain Management. And there are some associated floodplain management definitions that were edited or Summary, Morrisville has updated or adopted the mandatory floodplain maps. We did that back in July, and at this point, we're updating our floodplain ordinance to meet the state's model ordinance, so we can still, after this, I'll, I'll go to Town Council pending, after this, I'll go to Town Council and. Have any questions about that?
Tim? Tim?
Well, I guess, so this is, this is mandatory, right? So there's not really a vote.
Well, we could exceed it, but yes.
Pretty much, yeah. If you want to participate in the program, where, which allows people to buy, residents buy flood insurance, then you have, almost mandatory, pretty much.
Okay. Ken?
Did I hear you say that our ordinance need to match exactly what is in the state?
Yeah, at a minimum.
At a minimum, okay. So what, within, I suppose you are going to go through the actual amendments itself, or you are not planning to do that?
We're on, I included in the packet, the agenda packet, so I don't know if everyone had a chance to review it. We can go through it if there's any specific questions. Like I said, they're pretty, pretty minor, some of the stuff is just rewritten.
No, that's fine. I, just because it, typically, I've seen whenever we did UDO updates, we kind of go through what are the changes, but that's fine. And then, so our floodplain management plan or ordinance matches what is in the state. We are not exceeding what the state is asking for, in generally speaking, right? Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I'm just, and I'm sorry, but I was looking through there. I mean, a lot of this is just saying, instead of what the old number, location was of the old maps were, like, that hasn't been updated. So now this is referring to that. A lot of this is just referring to the new maps.
The reason I asked that was, if we are matching word-to-word to the state, right, to reduce this churn of every time when they change, we having to change, you know, is it possible to just say, hey, we will follow the state guideline and not have to manage all the text associated with it? Right, unless, that's why I asked the question, are we going above and beyond it?
I would say they don't, they update it, I don't know. I think the last time they updated it was, it doesn't, it doesn't happen very often.
Chris, sorry, go ahead. Do you have any questions or?
No, I went through all the documents. It makes sense to me.
Yeah, I agree.
Motion?
Sure, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve Ordinance 2022-352-0 for the Unified Development Ordinance Text Amendments related to the Floodplain Management.
Second?
All in favor? Aye. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Are you the one that does all the posts of calming stormwater structures?
I don't, but Tony at our environmental specialist does that in the stormwater division, so.
Kind of interesting seeing those, yeah.
Yeah, they're cool.
Thank you. It's a new business. That time of year again, when we elect a chair and vice chair. I would be happy to continue serving as chair. If people are hungry for change, I'll be happy to entertain anything else.
I'm going to pass out the ballot.
Okay. Ken, would you?
Brooke, they do need to nominate.
Yeah, we would, yeah.
First, so they do have to make a motion and nominate, sorry. We're doing vice president first?
Chair first.
Chair first. I'd like to nominate, I'd like to make a motion, nominate Ken if he's interested.
Who want to be chair?
Okay.
I'm very happy with vice chair.
And I'd like to nominate Lee.
Thank you, though.
Yeah, I second that motion, to continue with the chair and vice chair we have, so.
So we have some nominations. Is that adequate to meet the bar for moving forward, or?
Go ahead with the ballots.
Yeah. Does everyone have a pen? I'll have one I can share as well, thank you. So there's a blank for name, and then, do we just make a mark by who? Couldn't have done that two years ago.
It's much easier not combining the paper ballots with the teams' votes coming in Were there any other nominations for vice chair?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I feel like we heard at least two for Ken, so. And these are the minutes here also. That's the minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll forward those nominations on to Town Council for consideration at their December meeting.
Thank you. So now, has anyone looked at the proposed meeting schedule for next year, and do we have any comments? You have your lives planned out that far? So hearing no comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve next year's meeting schedule.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carries unanimously. Thank you. And now, we're to the comments.
Okay. Brooke, would you mind bringing up the newsletter? Thank you. Just to touch on some of the activity that's been going on in the development world over the past month, in terms of new applications that have been submitted, we did get an application in for a new subdivision called the Grove Subdivision. It's a duplex development that's proposed on property along Louis Stevens, so it's just north of the Breckenridge Development. There's a rather large piece of property there, about 52 acres, with 63 duplexes proposed. Also received an application for the construction of a new place of worship off of Franklin Upchurch Street. In other news, the Affordable Housing Implementation Plan that the PCB reviewed last month, that went to Town Council last night for a work session. They did spend a considerable amount of time talking through the various options, both the UDO incentives and the Public Employee Housing Choice Program. That work session went about two and a half hours, and I think that conversation is to be continued. So we'll keep you posted as that progresses. Terms of Town Council approvals, there were, are a number of approvals listed on the newsletter. All of those relate. All of those relate to the partnership with Wake Tech and the Wake County Public School System. So I won't read each of those off, but the various agreements, the amendment to the CTP and the amendment to the Wake Tech resigning were all approved by Town Council. And then there were a couple administrative site plan approvals. One was for the park at Town Center, which is 41 Town Homes. That's located on Church Street, kind of across from where the Town Center will be. And then the discovery at Watkins Road is going through the final approval process right now. That is the one that is on the TOD East site directly across from the Wake Tech campus. That is all I have, Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, so do we have any board comments? I'll start with Chris this time.
No comments. Happy Veterans Day tomorrow, for anybody who's listening.
I saw the green lights.
Yeah, I'll second that, and also wish the staff here a very happy Thanksgiving later this month, so, thank you.
Ken?
I'll just echo what Christine and Sanjay said.
Yeah, same. Thank you, everyone. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned. Thank you.